I call a meeting in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is November twenty-fourth, and for the audience and for the video, if the building looks strange, it is, because this is the first meeting we're having in a new village hall, I'd like to welcome everybody, and probably give you some more details as tonight goes on. Roll call, please.
Larry?
Here.
Aaron?
Meyer?
Here.
Caperos?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
We have the October twenty-seventh meeting and the intergovernmental meeting minutes of October thirtieth. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
One area we had talked about was we discussed seven till sixteen in the intergov, we should add that into the, that we were going to be going into resolution on that.
I thought we said?
Want to repeat that, Brian?
The, we, at the intergovernmental, we talked about seven till sixteen, that we were going to be passing a resolution on that.
Is there anything else? Is there a motion?
So?
Motion on the floor, and there's a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Here.
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
I'm glad you're here, man.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Course report.
All board members have a copy, total tax income received since the last meeting, one hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Also, election packets are still available for the April seventh, twenty fifteen election, here at the village hall. For anyone who wants to run for village trustee, there are three seats up for election. The filing dates for this is December fifteenth through the twenty-second.
Anyone from the audience wish to address the board? My name is an administration, trustee clear.
Yeah.
I think we did that last session.
Looking at a tax levy for two thousand and fourteen, collectible in two thousand and fifteen. As in the last two years, we're going to proceed with a zero tax increase. There is a slight exception that the, will be a decrease in general obligation bond levy since we've paid that down. So there's no new tax dollars coming through into this levy. The biggest issue that we have in front of us, the EVA or assessed value of the village has gone down, which is then going to increase the overall due to, so that will show as an increase. There was a chart also provided to us, based on the impact of tax levies, and for, for the general public, house value at two hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-four. We're about the same level as that tax levy back then. We're still lower than the nineteen ninety-four tax rate, so we're, again, we're going for a zero increase in our tax levy, so I make a motion for ordinance number?
Twelve sixteen.
For the tax levy of two thousand and fourteen, collectible in two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. The five-year financial plan was submitted last month, so we'll be talking about this in the next meeting. We need to have this financial plan resolved if we have any issues, and we want to make sure we provide that to Bob. The fi, the financial plan is what we use to develop our village budget for the following year, so anybody has any comments on that, please forward to Bob. Any questions?
We'll rate up in December again, hopefully go on in January.
The other item we have in front of us, since we have now opened up the village hall in six twenty-five Dixie Highway, plan is to hold all of our meetings here. The ordinance was submitted to us via email from Bob, so minor comments were made to it. There's other changes, we're codifying some descriptions of the standing meetings, incorporating some rules of public participation at the village board meetings. So it's more of a cleanup and modifying some of the committee structures. Anybody has any comments? I make a motion for ordinance, number seventeen, twelve seventeen, changing the location of the future village board meetings to six twenty-five Dixie Highway, and codifying descriptions of standing to many meetings, incorporating rules of public participation in village board meetings.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Waylon?
Yes. Also Comcast has advised us that the, there will be a price increase effective January first, two thousand and fifteen. It's more for information for everybody, but it's kind of what it is. And then for.
Thank you. Public buildings and properties parks in operation, trustee Will.
Okay, we have some last, last bills that we need to pay for the six twenty-five Dixie Highway account, and those total in the amount of ninety-four hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. I'd like to make a motion to pay those.
Second. Motion on the floor, a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Caperos?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, six twenty-five Dixie Highway. We are now officially calling this project complete, and recognizing that this building is our new village hall. So it's, it's been a long, long time coming, and this is our last update in the building. Everything came right at budget, right?
We still have a few more bills to pay yet. We have a phone system, maybe Apple phone system, we have to pay, and I can't think of any of the bills that we may have paid.
There's the, very few incidentals that came after the bad. If it's not on budget, it's very close to budget.
We have one more table we're getting for this room, because we need somebody for guests to sign in. By the way, Jeanette, do we, do we have a guest room around?
It's in the back, but I know everybody can see her, so.
Okay.
Just as, if, maybe it appropriates time now, I just want to take the time to thank staff, who do tremendous job, the committee, trustee Willing, the East Committee, trustee Capores, Public Works, everybody involved in the project, including the village board who supported the project, and the residents of the village, obviously, who supported the project. I really, really want to thank you. I think it is a positive move for the future, and for the residents that necessarily didn't agree with it, or board members that necessarily didn't agree, and I want to thank you as well. Because if it wasn't for the dialogue that took place while we were trying to do, decide whether or not to do the project, maybe we wouldn't have gotten to this point. But all the dialogue that has taken place, I think is important. I think it helped us to make the right decision, and we'll proceed in the future. And once again, I can't, I can't describe how much Public Works and staff worked on this project for the last year, and that they were tremendous, and I think it, it ended up very, very well. And you know what? How about giving everybody a hand?
Absolutely. And I want to thank you also. You've done a lot of work. You've, you've washed windows, you've.
We weren't supposed to tell them that.
But I'm, I'm just saying that you put a lot of time in here also, so we want to thank you for that. Then, once we moved into here, then, then the police department now had to clean up at our old village hall, and that's to clean up, the cleaning of the carpets and the painting and so forth. And we really need to thank them also, the chief, and the officers and the staff that are going through that transition too, because we not only have this new facility, we also have the police new facility downtown. So we want to thank you for, you know, jumping in and, and getting everything done as well.
Thank you.
I wonder when the police are going to have their open house, and they're.
Yeah, we're going to have to have another open house.
I think they need a little more time.
Probably in our house or so.
A little more time and some more dones pills.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a very good point, is last time, what we talked about here is part nearly, our facility, and we didn't talk a lot about the police department, but the police department was hurting, if not worse, for space than us. And so this move actually accomplished two different, two different things. And yet, police department's still located in the downtown area, we're located along Route One, but again, the police department was, was really, really hurting for space, and it solved two problems. So, and you're very right, I would have missed that tonight if you'd have mentioned it, so thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to move to the park. Everybody has seen the new picnic pavilion down there. Got a lot of great comments. That was put up totally by the Fourth of July Commission, and all the volunteers. It's amazing, the amount of work that was put in there, and that building is really constructed well. I think the only thing that was contracted out was the concrete pad. Everything else is, is volunteers in the Fourth of July. So, I mean, that's a great addition to the village. If you haven't seen it, it's, it's there, and it's, as much is going to be done this year, but then again, next year, we're going to, they're going to get out there and we're going to see some more projects. But I think that was the goal, is to get that, to that position now, that way in the springtime, you know, they can put the finishing touches on it. So that's a, a big improvement down there as well. It was suspended till next spring, so that's, that's another good thing happening in, in Beecher. The Wellton Stand Park update, Buddy? Have you had any contact? I don't think any work has been done out there.
Well, we cut the grass out there quite a few times.
Cut the grass. But we'll have to get together again and go over that for the springtime.
I think there were some people that came forward, guys, and said they wanted to volunteer, maybe some improvements out there in the park, but that never went in, did it? Not at all.
So we'll wait and see, you know, see how springtime comes, if, if springtime's going to be a wet springtime, or if it's going to be dry. A lot of times, we have those wet springtimes where it's hard to do any work out there, but, you know, that, that's the case. Future of the ice rink requirements park, that's still kind of up in the air. You know, one thing, you know, Greg mentioned that the Public Works have been working, you know, a lot in this building, and they have a lot of other projects, they have water mains, they have everything. So we're, we're still looking at that as far as if we have time to do anything with the ice rink this year. I know that we have made fun over the last several years, you know, Jonathan, keep that ice rink up because the weather always seems to be better and mild when there's, when there's the ice rink. But last year kind of didn't go with that, you know, last year was a, a great year. So, do you guys want to, we're, we're still up in the air as far as that goes.
Yeah, Youth Commission, we, we addressed it at our meeting. You know, I, as Public Works chairman, I, you know, there's other important things that the Public Works has to be taking care of that we got to get done. You know, things fell behind with the village hall and just other projects going on in the village. I do feel that the ice rink is very important, but there's other things that got to be done first, you know, other services that need to be provided to our residents. So it, it's just, as of right now, until the next Youth Commission meeting, which I think is December seventeenth, we just kind of wanted to see, now that the village hall is open, give Public Works a chance to get caught up a little bit. If there's time, committing, so on and so forth. I mean, it is definitely something we want to get up again. And at the same point is, if something happens and, you know, just on manpower and availability of being able to get it up this year, does not mean that it's crashed forever. You know, there's every intention to continue to put it up every year, it's just, sometimes things get in the way of life. So. And we, we have a liner? Yes. It can be a little. It can, yeah. Do you want to purchase it? The liner for sure, we could put it up. Is it last year's liner or? Nobody have to get anyone. That's a big expense too, and I think those liners in the past have been damaged. It's very unfortunate. But, you know, it's not going to stop it, but it, yeah. We'll see.
Okay. We'll, we'll update as, as it goes on. One thing that's not on my list, but I wanted to bring up, if you guys would like to take a look at it, the University of Illinois at Champaign, Bourbon, Champaign, did a study, a survey on parks, you know, and I, I was looking through the brochure, and it's a very, it's a very professional brochure, but basically what this does is they, they've looked at, I don't know how many communities, but Beecher was one of them that is in this study as far as our parks and recreation and everything else. And this talks about, you know, who is responsible for a lot of these, you know, the local parks, and if it's the park district, or if it's the village, or if it's the city, or if it's the county. And you guys might want to take a look at this, because it's interesting as far as where the funding comes from, who's responsible, and so, so on. Because I know a lot of times, you know, we talk about the parks and everything else, but, you know, they do this study every two years, and I, I think it's interesting to look through here. There's bar graphs in here, there's even dog parks in here, as far as where those, where those come from, and who supports those. So it, it breaks it all the way down. So that ends my report.
Body building is open.
Okay. Building Department, monthly reports are included. Also, the planning grant status report, I'm going to ask Bob.
We received a grant contract over the weekend, believe it or not, from the state. We have to formally approve a proposal. We'll be at the next board meeting. We have received three proposals. A subcommittee has been formed to redo the three proposals, and we will bring that recommendation to you next meeting, and then the client commission can set their project.
And that project, this is going to last?
Right now, the grant agreement says we have to be done with the project by June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. However, we can get an extension. So if we need more time, we'll take more time. But we plan on beginning that project, the first PCC meeting in January, which is January twenty-fifth, we will begin in earnest.
Okay. Very good. Status of the special use permit request for the outdoor dining at six eighteen Gould Street?
Yes, the village attorney, who's here tonight, has repined that, since there was no quorum at that meeting, even though the, the hearing may have been valid, their recommendation is not. So they need a, a quorum to discuss the findings of the hearing and make the finding a factor in regulation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
They'll do that at the January twenty-fifth meeting.
Okay. All right, sounds good. And that ends the report.
Thank you. Public safety, trustee Capores.
Yeah, police department and coenforcement, monthly report are enclosed for your review. Results of this year's Halloween patrols, chief?
No results, it was quiet. I think the weather had a lot to do with it. I remember there were a couple other Halloweens where we had weather that was that bad, and actually snow, but no incidents to report of. It was a quiet evening.
Okay, thank you. Consider a resolution adopting the emergency management county-wide all hazards mitigation plan, December two thousand and thirteen edition. This adoption makes it part of the Will County Response Plan, and it is recommended that it be approved so we can request assistance and resources from our Will County EMA and other agencies in times of need, and help others in the county if, when they request assistance. Chief, you want to explain this to us?
Yeah, when I attended the Will County EMA coordinators meeting, this is something they're asking all municipalities to pass, is this all hazards mitigation plan. And it is required by, if we're to receive any federal funding, they want to make sure that we're a part of a plan through Will County. Because one of the biggest costs when you get into this is the debris management, so they want to make sure you have a plan in place to address all these issues. The county board passed this at the October meeting, and that's why I'm bringing it forward now. And got it hot off the press and ready to pass. I recommend it, it'll, it's one step closer to that if we need the funding, we'll be available for the funding.
Any questions from anybody on this?
So chief, the county has the plan, and we just, we just?
It's, all the municipalities, there are several that participated. Beecher was one of them, that we provide input. The plan is actually, it's like four hundred and fifteen pages long. It's a big, thick plan.
But it's maintained by the county?
Through county EMA, yes. It's like a protocol for all the other municipalities that we're going to stay, we're going to stick with this plan, so that Shorewood or Plainfield doesn't do anything separate than we would or Will County.
Any other questions? Resolution number?
Twenty fourteen fourteen.
Like to make a motion that we consider resolution twenty fourteen dash fourteen, consider a resolution adopting the emergency management county-wide all hazards mitigation plan, December two thousand and thirteen edition.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Any questions of the chief or myself? If not, that concludes my report.
Public Works, trustee Capores.
Water and sewer department, monthly reports are enclosed for review, along with the water building register for the months of September and October. Everyone can note the water loss on there, fifty-six percent filled the pump. There is a few things that skew this that, as a committee, we're working on, we want to get figures. In this time, hydrant flushing took place. There's a lot of un-metered water that goes into that percentage. I still feel it's, it's extremely low, but there are other things that we're looking at, possibly. I, I think that the number one priority on getting this number accurate has got to be, we got to figure out the un-metered, unbilled water issues in town, i.e. schools, law fields, all that. There's, there's got to be a way, and we've talked about this as a committee, and we will continue to work on that. I think that's our best bet of knowing what our true pump-to-bill ratio is. The numbers that we have, we go off and they are a judge, but there's still all those unknowns that go into this number. So there are things that we will be working on moving forward as a committee, and that kind of falls in line with leak detection, leak detection update. It is supposed to start this week. We have confirmed from the contractor, the guys are supposed to start this week, we weren't given a specific day, if it was Monday, or Friday, or Wednesday yet, but leak detection begins this week. From our pre-con meetings that we can, had, is, it was with the crew, it would take approximately twelve to fifteen working days for them to complete the leak detection. And we'll be getting reports all the way through as, as they go. I don't know, did Randy say if it was going to be daily reports he was going to give us?
He would probably, they would.
As they found weeks.
Yeah, at the end of the day, they would report to me if they found something big, they would report. I can tell you that they will be starting on the older part of town where all the duck old main is at.
Okay.
Which is, you know, like, probably from Melrose up to Willow, and pretty much from, yeah, everything west of, of Route One here.
Okay. Status of the valve replacement project on Penfield Street. I spoke with Buddy, that's going to hopefully, this week, we're going to get in, that's something that will be done at night, correct?
Yes.
Where you're going to come in at nighttime, where the water will be shut off, create, hopefully, a little of an inconvenience on the residents that will be affected by that.
Hopefully, they won't even notice that it's even done.
Okay. Status of Parkway tree replacement program, that is complete, that project is done for the year.
Yes, it is.
Banner replacement and decoration installation. I noticed the snowflakes as I drove here on Route One. I, I think that whole project is complete, with the banners and all the flakes and everything.
Yes.
Thank you. New pickup truck that will be replacing the twenty, two thousand and four utility truck. We were hoping to have it here by this meeting, it's still yet to be delivered.
Right.
So I'm sure we'll see it cruising around town as soon as it's, it's here. Fairway Drive emergency paving project update. As it stands right now, everyone knows and has been part of this weather the last few weeks, it hasn't even begun. Temperature has to be above forty-five degrees.
Yep.
For asphalt to even be laid. So there is a chance that they may not happen this year, that may be put off until spring. This was done and approved on a emergency basis. If we do go till spring, we'll obviously look to, to keep that bid in place, and, and possibly go out for a bid, we'll still have to talk the calendar, make sure that the bid's still good, because the bid was written. I think it was for thirty days, or sixty days, or something like that. We'd have to check the paperwork on it, but we'll have to see if they'll hold to those prices, see what the winter brings and everything else. That's something that maybe, may have to go back out for bid in the spring, but it's something that will be addressed if the weather holds up and they are unable to get it done this year, so. Next is to consider a motion authorizing the completion of phase one engineering on the Penfield Street water main, from Reed to Dixie, in an amount of five thousand dollars, with funding coming from the water main replacement account. There is a memo in here. This goes back, we had a meeting, the administrator and myself had a meeting with two representatives from Baxter and woman, which is Derek Gold and Ray, at which time we learned that the I E P A now offers thirty-year loans, which is a complete change of everything we've been doing with five-year planning and everything else, as to when we would be able to afford a project of this magnitude. As any resident would know, driving up and down Penfield is like a war zone. That is by far our worst area of water main. I believe we have three or four breaks on Penfield that were just recently catch, or getting patched.
Oh, man, probably six.
Six. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a major issue. Does anyone have any questions on the memo? In there, where we've talked about beginning preliminary planning as to when we would be able to accomplish this, when we need to start going through our phases of engineering to complete the applications for the I E P A loans and so forth.
Sean, if you could emphasize that, one of the things that they discussed when we learned that it went from a twenty-year to a thirty-year loan, that opened a door to do the project much sooner than we thought. That's why he's, he's controlling his enthusiasm, but we're very, very pleased to hear that we went from a thirty-year loan.
And, and this is something that's come up, I know it's been brought up by other trustees, about Penfield being a concern. And, and it's always been, I'm the one wishless to fix, it's always been the funding. I mean, if we could major, wave a magic wand and have the cash and availability of the, the money to, to fix every water main in town, we would, we'd love to do that. Again, everything comes down to financing. And with this thirty-year loan, it's, it's, as it states in our packet, I mean, it's a game changer. It's a big difference. It's a big difference, because as a board, we have a resolution that states that if we consider anything on a loan, that we have a dedicated source of revenue to pay for that loan. And it's there, as a thirty-year loan. It was never there as a twenty-year loan, or anything smaller. It's, me and Brian, co-chair, have discussed this at length, and, I mean, this is it, this is our opportunity, and we need to move. And what this first five thousand does is this gets us ready to be able to go to the I E P A formal. Now, this was done five, four years ago, and we are able to still use a lot of the engineering from that. The second step would be phase two, which I think was estimated at possibly fifteen thousand.
This five thousand takes it to Reed Street. The original design only went to Woodland. Now, we're going to go to Reed with it, because our S T P project includes Dixie Highway to Gould.
Yes.
So we would replace the mains out with Reed Street.
Up to the tracks.
We have had problems in front of those businesses on Penfield, which we, we reworked as well.
Absolutely.
So you might as well replace it. If you're going to replace a road, you might as well replace the water main of the road. I'm a lot more comfortable now with this thirty-year, because what I did with that memo, if you read it, we can finance the steel plant and the Penfield water main with those two thirty-year loans, and talk about the same financing that we've been talking about for the last ten years. So I, I'm comfortable. The twenty-year loans, I couldn't make the numbers work. With this thirty-year loan, yes, we'll pay more interest, no doubt, but we can afford to do it with the money we got coming through. So, you know, there's goods and bad through the thirty-year. Unfortunately, with the thirty-year, you're paying more interest, but the interest rate's so low, one and a quarter percent. Thirty years at one and a quarter, you kidding me? Let's go for it.
So did, does anyone have any questions or comments on this? If not, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion authorizing the completion of phase one engineering on the Penfield Street water main, from Reed to Dixie, in the amount of five thousand dollars to Baxter and woman, with funding coming from the water main replacement account. Second.
Motion on the floor, and a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Meyer?
Next is village receives one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars for a Safe Routes to School grant. This goes back a while, um, this is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar project with a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars coming from the state, and the village's local match is twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, which will come from M F T funds. We still have to approve the grant agreement, so this project will not begin until spring of fifteen. Twenty-eight projects were awarded throughout the state totaling five dol-, five point nine eight million dollars. This money will be used, um, on our project end of it, um, the money's gonna be used to put up solar power, L E D flashing, school zone speed, speed limit signs, uh, speed zone signs, crosswalks, and this will be, happen at all three of the schools in town. When we first looked at applying for this grant, committee met, we discussed numerous, options of what to, what to go for when we applied for this grant. And we felt, and, and as a board, we all concluded together that, um, you know, this is a, a Safe Routes to School grant, and that these, these L E D signs and the crosswalks get marked and lit up and everything is, is a, is a good route to go. So I think it's a positive thing, and I think it's a very positive thing that we received it, we rewarded it out of, you know, one of twenty-eight projects throughout the state. So, um, thanks, Bob, and Baxter and Holman, obviously, for getting this through, so. Good news. And then, uh, last thing is consider a motion authorizing payment in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to PermaSeal from the public infrastructure account for crack sealing of various streets in the village. Twenty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine feet of crack sealing was performed. All the streets in our twenty-ten and twenty-thirteen road resurfacing projects were sealed in addition to all of Nantucket Cove, which was resurfaced in twenty-ten. So I will go ahead and I will make a motion authorizing payment in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to PermaSeal from the public infrastructure account for crack sealing of various streets in the village.
Second.
Motion on four, and a second, any questions? Go ahead.
Clearing?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic Development Trustee, man.
The first item, consider an ordinance establishing an enterprise zone and authorizing the president and clerk to sign an intergovernmental agreement for the creation of same. We have material enclosed, we've talked about this at the last meeting. Although the village gives up the most in this process, all other taxing bodies and hence the community will benefit from these incentives, we will only see a small drop in net income from the fifty percent building permit fee reduction, but all other incentives are just a reduction from a larger collection we would receive. We need this zone to remain competitive with Indiana and Kankakee County, and there's no guarantee we will become designated, but if we do, it will increase our chances for successful economic development. Virtually every town to the north of us is included in this enterprise zone, Creed is the last one northwest, if we don't get involved, I mean, we don't have Tiff District, we don't plan on any, Lowell, Indiana has one, Creek, Mummy, University Park, Mantino, Grant Park, we're pretty much surrounded by towns that are getting involved in a lot of economic incentives to attract business and industry. So I think this is a good idea, at least as a start to kind of get us some incentives, and this isn't something that's gonna cost us. It only costs, if we bring a business in, we lose, what, fifty percent of the building permit fee, and basically the businesses get tax incentives for, for locating here.
I will say that we've already had one party express an interest in utilizing this settlement, which we'll be discussing later.
Does anybody have any questions about it? I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number.
Twelve eighteen.
Establishing an enterprise zone and authorizing the president and clerk to sign an intergovernmental agreement for the creation of same.
Second. Motion on four, and a second, any questions in motion? Go ahead.
Taylor?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes.
And next, kind of in the same vein, consider an ordinance providing a fifty percent property tax reimbursement for a period of ten years for any new industrial construction exceeding thirty thousand square feet in size. This ordinance will sunset after five years, so a future village board could reevaluate its success. Uh, this ordinance supersedes the five-year fifty percent off on the enterprise zone, which is made available to any commercial or industrial building that applies to her status. We also discussed this in the past, this would be a very large development, anything exceeding thirty thousand square feet, and, um, it's something that we're not getting any tax money now if they don't come here, so. This is also something I think that will help us with a little bit of a competitive advantage with the surrounding towns.
It'll also show the other taxing bodies that can use.
So I would like to, to make a motion to adopt ordinance number.
Twelve nineteen.
Nineteen. Providing a fifty percent property tax reimbursement for a period of ten years for any new industrial construction exceeding thirty thousand square feet.
Second.
Motion on four, and a second, any questions in motion? Go ahead.
Clearing?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Bernard Welding sewer connection update.
You need to that, the bad news, we've had not, we've had difficult negotiations with some of the farmers out there, and, uh, latest is the farmers have expressed, you know, unwillingness to participate in the future of that effort. I shared that with Bernard, I'm waiting for their response. I'll just leave it at that.
We'll see what happens next. New website launched, this project is now in the implementation stage, and changes are being made to the site as we move forward, but we now have the ability to maintain the website in-house. I know Jeanette's been doing a lot of work with that, and it looks great.
We've seen a lot of positive comments from residents about the website in the last couple of weeks, yes. And kudos to Jeanette and the, and the other office ladies who worked on that project.
Done a lot of work into it, spent a lot of hours, but we hope, there's a lot of information there, where now residents don't have to call us, they can scroll the website, they can read anything that they need. And if there's anything that they wanna add into it, we'll put it on the list, make it easier for all of us.
And Casey's is now open for business, uh, it's gonna be a twenty-four hour operation, so now we have three twenty-four hour gas stations, um, they, and each one of them offers a little something different, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The intergovernmental meeting held on October thirtieth, uh, there's not much to report, uh, it was not very well attended, basically, we had a presentation from Steve Shelby from I D A, the truth we've related or anything new, uh, he just reiterated everything, was somebody else remember that was there, that was brought up?
Then I think the biggest issue for those that weren't there, uh, was expressed by the fire department, where they have to respond to emergency calls on the Eliana Expressway, and the state does not make any plans to reimburse them for their efforts, have to buy equipment, maybe additional manpower, and that was a concern that was expressed. I would say I enjoyed the meeting we spent discussing that issue.
That's something that we, actually trustee Curry brought up at one of the very first meetings, we brought that up, that anything that we provide to the expressway, we should be funded, uh, and, you know, basically it really hasn't gone anywhere, and to be honest with you, one of the explanations we gave is that they've never done it before. Anyway, we did fair enough before. South suburban airport, Bob, want you to?
Uh, yeah, I went to a county meeting where they talked about the extended metro service into the airport, and, uh, they would extend the southeast service into the airport and also the electric line that runs from U P into the airport. Whether or not the two link together, I, I really don't know. There was also a presentation on high-speed rail, uh, using the U P electric line to run high-speed rail service to the airport because, uh, that rail line is one of the few rail lines that go into the city that don't have any at-grade rail crossings. Either they're underpasses or overpasses, there's very few at-grade crossings.
There's no, there is no at-grade crossing. Other than at U P where you're.
It's rated every day.
Once you get to U P, you do, that's the first crossing you hit, and they don't even cross that right now where U P's at. The issue they're gonna have is they need to modify that rail to be a high-speed rail, it's a freight-rated rail, so they will not be able to do it unless they replace the trucks.
Correct, and they're talking about doing that. Lots of money.
That's what they're talking about.
Um, that's money.
The Eliana and I three ninety-four quarter update, uh, last week there was a public hearing held at Beaumont, uh, some of the local businesses were there, uh, probably one of the most unique things we saw there is they're proposing a turnabout, a roundabout? Roundabout? Roundabout at Eagle Lake and Route One, um, which you can't really say they don't work because they do work elsewhere in the country, uh, but one of the things that I wrote and commented on was the fact that, okay, I can see the roundabout there, they have visions of having some type of look on the feature thing in the middle of it, uh, which I think would be, uh, unique to feature, and I, I like the idea, except I emphasize that it'll only work if you take the trucks off of Route One on the bypass. So I included that the roundabout would work, uh, provided they built the bypass and they had a truck route bypass to the truck school, traffic continues through town.
The roundabout was one option, the other one was a car crossout, which neither one works with the existing configuration of the traffic again on Route One.
But that big talk was the roundabout. Golf course update, uh, they are, uh, two representatives were here tonight, if you happen to meet them, uh, they are going out for financing, it looks very, very close that it could be sold, uh, obviously they still have some hurdles to go through, um, we do have some things that we need to talk about.
Here is a sheet.
Yep.
They, uh.
Share the one-page sheet that says, "Meeting on Golf Course."
They asked for different, uh, incitem, incentives, I don't really think they're asking for a lot to help them out, um, basically if you go through the west. Bob, you can explain the east.
Yeah, um, do you want me to just go through one, and then make comments if you want?
Yeah.
There's one that's five, they, we have to get an easement, and I had no luck with anyone bank getting one, for a sanitary force main and a water main that exists on golf course property, uh, from basically Trim Creek all the way to Highland and Court. Uh, if you recall, we were able to obtain easements, uh, from ComEd and from another private party, but we never got this easement, uh, from them with bank. Jack Mayer ran the water mains to his own property at the time, and somehow it was an oversight and easement was never granted. When the golf course changed hands and the bank foreclosed on it, um, we needed easement for those pipes. So we negotiated with them the five thousand dollars for the easement, uh, which we have an escrow from the M G M L of Credit, which we would use to buy the easement. Uh, the next issue that we discussed with them is we've got some water flowing around the Four North Green from our storm sewer system, it's a continuous flow of water, I am hoping that leak detection will determine that that's water main water, but if not, it might continue to flow, we don't know where it's coming from. Uh, but we made them aware of the fact that we had a deal with Ron Lyon regarding the flow of that water around that green on his property. They are in the process of buying both Buddy's, the bowling alley, the golf course, and all the vacant land, which includes the lot, the vacant lot on Fairway Drive. With that, we talked about parking arrangements, because as you know, in the summertime Buddy's gets very, uh, busy. We'd have, might have some big meetings here like tonight where we have overflow parking for the open house. So we talked about sharing parking with Bowling Alley and with Buddy's and with this building. If there's no meetings at this building at night and there's some overflow parking from Buddy's, I don't know if that really bothers me, 'cause we're business friendly. But at the same time, we might need some parking like tonight, several of us parked at the bowling alley to keep the parking open for residents. So we're gonna work those things out on a case-by-case basis. The chipping green, and we made, we, we brought to their attention that the village actually owns half of the chipping green behind this building, and it was a fifteen-year license for any golf course operator to fabric the chipping green, and we discussed a more longer-term relationship with the chipping green beyond the fifteen years. Again, remember, we wanna keep the golf course successful, we're not here to rip the chipping green out, but at the same time, we talked about relocating the chipping green and possibly integrating the parking between the bowling alley and the golf course, which would make a lot of sense. So there's a lot of plans in the works. Uh, we have offered them, and we discussed with them, of course, we can't offer it without your approval, uh, one year of free licenses for the first year of operation. That would be something that we collect now that we would have to give up for one year, but I don't think it adds up to a lot of money. Uh, they also said for the first three years, can they only pay the inspection fees on building permits kept at a thousand dollars during that period? I don't think I had a real problem with that, and I'll explain to you why. Uh, they also want one hundred percent of the one point five percent municipal sales tax rebate for ten years on just the bowling alley and the golf course. We took Buddy's off the table, we only wanted it for the bowling alley and the golf course, we wouldn't wanna give it Buddy's, who is a rather significant sales tax producer. We talked about allowing to sell liquor legally on the patios in the rear of the clubhouse, technically right now, they can only sell liquor from a golf cart in the back, they can't technically take an order for liquor on the back patio according to their license. It's a technicality, but it's something we do wanna work out. And we also discussed special event licenses for outdoor entertainment to be considered by the village board, should it decide to do so. We made them aware that, that prior golf course owners had, uh, 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 success with large tents for overflow, uh, golf outings. Another significant, uh, point is point number eleven on your sheet, they want to align their driveway with Penfield Street to provide a four-way intersection. And they asked that in our S T P application, we consider that intersection for signalization. And I think it's a great idea to put a traffic light in Penfield and Route One, and have all four roads aligned, we could put OptiCom on the traffic light for the fire department, who has a difficult time pulling out on Route One from Penfield, uh, when there are an emergency call, and I think that would help it be warrants. If you recall, we had to get Chestnut Drive qualified because there was flow traffic volumes there, and we had to do two or three studies before we had enough traffic to warrant a traffic light at that corner. Penfield's gonna be the same way, so we're gonna have to find other criteria that boost the rating up for signalization, and I think the public safety aspect of the fire department being on Penfield could be a definite advantage there. And I think that's a good idea to add a traffic light at Penfield and Route One as part of our S T P program and align that street up. So when we have major golf events or people going in on Buddy's, they can use that road to give it a nod. That was kind of a unique new concept. Uh, they wanna decouple from the development agreement, uh, as soon as we get a legal description. Now, we discussed that before as a board, and they're not decoupling from the zoning of the property, it's still gonna be zoned special use open space, uh, that, we're not getting away from that because it's part of a P U D, but what they wanna get away from, especially from a financing point of view, is the obligations to put in major lift stations and water towers and things like that, that were in that original development agreement, that never really ran with the golf course property, ran with the developmental, development property to the east, so they wish to decouple from that. Uh, they also want us to support an application, and that's the name of the, of the company, M Car LLC, for enterprise zone status of the commercial properties, because they plan on doing a major revitalization of the clubhouse, they have some major plans for the clubhouse, and that would be eligible under the enterprise zone status for them to buy building materials and what have you, tax-free, to fix the clubhouse, so they, they're asking for that. Also, um, they want us to honor the option of considering commercial if the residential is owning a property along Indiana Avenue, provided adequate open space and buffers are utilized to the satisfaction of surrounding residential property. This was the one we discussed the most. They understand that we were sued at one time over that very issue. They're not looking at putting a nine-hundred unit project in along Indiana Avenue like the last time we had. But what they do want the option to have is to utilize some of that property for some development in the event they can't keep this thing open as a twenty-seven hole golf course. And they understand that they would have to make the surrounding property owners happy by either providing a wooded buffer, they talked about planting, uh, a major wooded preserve between any residential property and the property they would develop, so that people would have this, still this sense of open space or, or quietness. They, they have a serious problem with the guarantee of a golf course view to every residential property out there, because there's no guarantee the golf course is gonna survive any issue. So their option to that, or their alternative to that, is if they ever developed along Indiana Avenue, and not all the way back to Miller Street like that original proposal was, just along the South Nine, could they provide several hundred feet of buffer between existing single-family and their project? And we said, look, we cannot contractually zone property, can't do it, but what we can do is we can say we'll be open to discuss it. But it's gonna, it's gonna depend on what the surrounding residential property owners say when we get to that point. And that may never happen, it may happen twenty years from now, it may happen ten years from now, or it may never happen. But they wanted that option open because they realized the risk they're taking in buying the golf course. Let's face it, that thing's lost money for several years, and it's gonna be a tough road for them to hold, to bring it back. Is that, does that kinda explain the issue?
Just to reiterate, they have no plans of doing anything with it, it's a what-if scenario if whatever they're planning on doing now, if it doesn't work, the bottom line is they want to be able to market the property somehow, if in fact down the road they can't keep it as a golf course anymore. They have nothing to do with, they have no intention of doing anything, building anything, you know, nothing like that whatsoever. It's, they want it as a golf course, they want the properties as they are right now, that's their goal is, but it was a what-if situation. That's their goal is, but it was a what-if situation.
The only other thing I wanted to add is we are giving up some dollars here. And I'm not concerned about giving up those dollars because they're talking about adding amusement, the casino games, I can't remember.
Video game.
Video game in the bowling alley and in the golf course. Those 10 machines alone, if they do that, will more than cover any losses we give to them on the sales tax and on the licenses.
Good. That's on item number seven because we started out at five years, knowing what we've learned in the past about other agreements that been made. But after discussing it at length, Bob with the video gaming felt comfortable with it that we could go up 10 years because we'll make a difference with that. So he was comfortable with the 10 years, even though we tried to stay at five years, which is sort of consensus that we've been dealing with lately with everything else that we've been doing with. The main thing was, was we wanted to bring this up and to make sure that you were in agreement of it. And then, then we would direct the attorney to draw that. They're at a point, the reason why this came up now is they're at a point where one of the banks that they're going to want something in writing from us of what we're looking for them or whatever the case may be, which is what's impacting this now. That's why I wanted to make sure that nobody had any problem with it.
We had candid discussions in the past regarding the future of the golf course. And it was my impression from you guys that you were willing to give up something to keep the golf course here. That was my impression. I believe this proposal is revenue neutral to the village. In other words, it's not costing you anything. The stuff you're giving up, you're gonna make back on the video gaming. So you might be able to keep this golf course alive and functional and no cost to the village. It looks like that could be the case here. And that's great news because as you know, as I do, it's tough being a golf business right now.
What type of improvements are they talking about? Have they even gotten to that point?
Oh, yeah. Anywhere from redoing the clubhouse, redoing the entranceway, redoing the, I don't know, the clubhouse, but also the inside to include the banquet area. They've talked about the greens. In fact, right now, they're, they don't feel the greens were adequately winterized and they're having a, for lack of better terms, tamper it over it. And they're, you know, trying to get them to move on that to get it winterized, although I'm sure it's probably too late.
They have the lappedated buildings they gotta take down.
The, yeah, the lappedated buildings was one of the things that we spoke to him one day. They already recognized that they want it down. There's a lot of things that they want to do to make it known that they're new and they want to make it improved and they want to succeed at the golf course. The realignment, they said, where's the entrance to the golf course? There is no real entrance to the golf course. That's why they talked about realigning Penfield, which is a very good idea. And then make that the wild entrance of the golf course, if you wanna call it that. A driving range, they're looking for land in the driving range. And at the time, remember, when we started reporting this to you, we already talked about the golf course. And now we're talking about other associated properties with it. So they finally figured out that behind the bowling alley, apparently there's a way where they would be able to bring in the driving range into the golf course somehow behind there. They thought the driving range would be, is important to them. Like I said, a lot of the ideas that we would bring up from other prospective owners, we brought the ideas up. These guys had the same ideas, you know, and like I say, they upset it all along. These are very optimistic, but you know, these prospective buyers, probably the best ones we've had all along.
And the risk we take is if we don't, if we don't assist them in buying this property, it might be pushing weeds out there on the golf course. And I don't think that's in the village's best interest or the community's best interest. We gotta give this private party a jump start. We gotta be able to start, keep that golf course open.
And I think that, again, we gone over it a couple of times saying that the problems that we've gone through with the lawsuit over the golf course view, preserving the open space, the green space, and they're very much aware of what we would like to see in the future. Not necessarily a development or anything like that. We'd like to see the green space. And I think they understand that and I think they agree with that. You know, it's just that it's the one thing that, you know, what if it doesn't succeed? They are prospective businessmen. They own several businesses. So I have no doubt that they have a business plan. They have an expert in the field from the PGA that they've been consulting. They went out here numerous, numerous times before we even knew them.
And all our conversations with friends have not had a ser- some of these developers you meet with wanna beat you up for everything they get, you know, these guys. No, actually, we came up with these ideas for them. They just say, hey, we need some help. What can you do? They didn't have specifics. They knew what they wanted to do. They knew about the building permits. But the rest of the stuff, basically, we came up with to assist them. And I think we can do it at no cost to the military.
And they're going in, they're going in right now with the fact of doing the whole golf, as far as the 27 holes.
Yeah, there's no talk of, they recognize that 27 holes is a, is a, what do you call it? Unique.
It's a great outing.
They're trying, and that's exactly what they talked about. There were several outings in the area that they knew that they lost, that they were here in the past. They already know they want to try and get them back. There's other ones that they've reached out. There was a couple of them that they mentioned that they would treat up, they would like to try to get.
There's several leagues, there's several outings, major outings. You're right, there was some big ones involved with the military that they were.
Yeah, the ones that you would never even dream of, but they threw them out. They're already in contact with them to bring them in the feature, which obviously that raises, you know, obviously to our rest of our businesses. But the ones that they're used to be here, they want to try and bring everything back. And they're trying to make sure that they preserve their client base up in the past so that they can reach out to these individuals and come back. Like I said, I'm very, very optimistic. I think they got their act together.
And I think the spinoff from a successful golf course from the other businesses in town, buying gas, maybe going to the princess for dinner or other things that happen, I think it's worthwhile to keep that golf course viable.
I don't have any troubles with any of the incentive packages. The only thing that would be up to the legal minds, and it's been years since I looked at the old development agreement, but I would just want to be sure we don't get hemmed into a corner if we're gonna divorce from the development agreement and then get into commercial and residential zoning on the one end.
I agree. That's what concerned me because initially you're talking about decoupling, and they're not thinking about residential, but once you decouple, now what do you do if they want to go down to that path?
That would be the only.
That's the one that causes me, because out of the whole thing, I understand where you're going, but in decoupling, if it's gonna stay as a golf course, makes a lot of sense. But once you put that option about commercial and residential zoning on that south side, I don't know why you're decoupling.
With the question. With the decoupling, it stays open space. So whatever would come back would have to come back to PCC and then to this board. And all that zoning is discretionary at that point from going from the open space to whatever, residential, commercial, I don't think industrial would work over there.
But can it be decoupled with the option, and they're saying they want the option of considering commercial and residential zoning?
I think that maybe it's a straw.
Well, if you're gonna decouple, then why not just say we'll decouple as, from that agreement, as long as it's golf course, but once you, once you step, but hang on. But once you step into the discussion of zoning anything commercial or residential, you're, that section's automatically coupled to that other area. And I really would like to know the depth they're planning going in because you can get two par fives parallel going straight out. You come in a lot, a good distance.
Boy, if we decouple, we're gonna have to have legal description plus a survey so we know exactly what they're talking about. Secondly, it stays open space. And that's where your control is. Any subdivision zoning after that comes back in and if you'll go back in time, the ways, the whole idea of that development agreement was for the entirety of the property so that if they did X, they had to do Y. If they did Z, they had to do B. And if they did this, they had to do this. A lot of that, some of that's been done. Improvements have been done.
But that, but that section along Indiana Avenue was not really aligned with that. It was that whole, that was like literally the third phase that Jack Mayer had brought in, and that's where a lot of the movement was against it. I sat through a number of those meetings when that was going on. And honor the option of considering that, I mean.
And that's why I said, that's probably a strong word on here. It's just open to it. You could say no. It's zoning, it's discretionary. That's why I didn't have a problem when they brought it up initially to me.
As long as we have control and don't lose that by decoupling from the other one, I would still want to have as much control.
The agreement expires in 2024 regarding this. So whatever, whatever's, when the agreement expires, the only thing that remains is the zone. Is that correct?
Why would we even need it in the agreement or any type of agreement?
If I could specify, number 14 was our wording, the Fox wording.
Not in a term.
That'd be legal. So just, again, I think the idea of number 14 was bottom line is that is there's something that we could do that if in fact their plan did go through and they had to do something else with the property.
And this is probably the third time I've heard from prospective purchasers, the financial obligations that are in that development agreement because the entirety of the golf course, all the residential property, everything is all tied in to the financial obligations with the rest of the agreement. And it's only because that entirety of the property was owned by one individual, but the way that Jack split it up for financing purposes, for mortgages and everything else, you end up having several different parties owning pieces and bits and whatever else. And so this property in and of itself is just a golf course, again, subject to the appropriate legal description survey. I'd have a problem decoupling the agreement from it, putting it in the ordinance itself that would prove that that it is open space and clearly set that out for that legal description. So there's no his hands or buts about it. And then moving forward, you know, if they brought something to you, you're completely in the driver's seat. I don't even know about that part, but you're still the driver's seat. You can say no. You can say yes. You can do what you want.
Is there an issue where if we decouple this, that something's gonna come back from the other properties? As a result of the decoupling that we broke in some rule along?
Can you enter into a, is this an agreement or an ordinance that we're gonna have?
This would be an ordinance.
An ordinance. Could you say any ordinance with the exception of the following?
No, no, no.
So if they're concerned about what's contained in the development agreement regarding golf course views in the South Nine, we would just say we'll decouple all the financing, but we'll not decouple from any discussion on the land?
You could put that, you could put that in your ordinance?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe that's if that would make you guys comfortable. I think they want to decouple from the financing. Because when a bank looks at that development agreement, we could be obligated to put up a water tower? That's when they get.
Discuss.
Yeah. Forest main, that's already there and other things that are in there that you don't know what the status is.
So I believe, is it a consensus or a motion to authorize you to preempt a legal action?
Well, I guess.
Questions.
Right. Go ahead.
My first question is, you know, with number seven, I'd be curious as to what the numbers are that are generated in tax, sales tax revenue from the bowling alley and the golf course.
I don't even know if they know at this point. We don't because we're not privy to individual business information. But I can tell you that in the bowling alley, the only thing I can think of that is taxable is the liquor and the food. I don't think they sell anything else in the bowling alley because services aren't taxed.
Yeah, the bowling itself is not taxed.
Right. And the thing is true with the golf course. Only what the bar, the restaurant, the pro shop.
What the outings do.
It's a small number, I think.
Actually, what?
Small number, you think?
What we just said is that we kicked that around again because of the 10 year that we were trying to figure out what was taxed in there and there's not elected as taxed. And there's certainly not elected as being sold. So.
My, well, does, I mean, like you said, this is all still very preliminary. Maybe we think about, you know, up to 100% of a certain number.
Do you want to cap it?
Well, I mean, if you're talking about them coming in possibly and doing how much in improvements and going after how large of outings and everything else, right, well, outings come with large food bills, large liquor bills, which are the taxable things. Just without a number there, I mean, it was just a question. Doesn't mean I'm against it by any means. It's just, you know, what are we sacrificing? When we say it's a small number, what is that small number?
Given, given the current operations.
Exactly, exactly. And what could that number of?
Right. The potential revenue you're giving out could be big.
Look at what the Waltons was, right?
Yes.
You know, and so, and then my next question is, what is the distance from Indiana to Penfield where we already have a traffic light?
The two lights would have to be what they call.
Linked up.
Just Chestnut and Church are linked. If you notice, if you just beat, if you go south on Route One and the light turns yellow and you go through it, you're gonna get stuck at Chestnut because the two lights are talking to each other.
Well, I mean, you know, we sat here and talked about bypasses and stuff like that. Right now, you put a semi stopped at, I mean, how much more could you even put between Penfield and Indiana? If there was a semi stopped in Indiana.
Bigger comment, the big question we had, obviously, all this is whether I dot blank stated here.
Absolutely, yeah. There's a lot of engineering and traffic council and everything else that we've run through. I was just wondering if we knew what the distance was.
If Penfield goes green, Indiana's got to be. They do those lights. That's a legitimate concern.
And those were my two questions.
Scott?
No, I'm gonna ask my question.
Right.
I'm fine with it. Yeah, I mean, you know, like I said.
Do you have any idea what kind of cap you want to know this at?
I don't know. I don't know what they're producing.
I'm gonna cap something. I don't know that, what is producing now?
Was that figure in any of the documents we did?
I don't think they even know.
From prior?
Well, we had some numbers.
You know, and some of the, some of the other things.
They're all questionable.
One of the other things I've thought about, which.
But that was all, that was all.
We didn't have to see the sales tax reports.
That was, the numbers we saw were based on the amount of people using the golf course. It wasn't on sales of liquor. That was based on amount of people under it. The only, the other thing we did see is Buddy's.
Now, I mean, just, this is just, I mean, obviously, I mean, you guys are gonna work on this. I mean, just, just some food for thought. You know, do you go 100% until improvements are done? Once improvements are done, do you start a decrease in the number? You give them the 100% to help them get up and going. Once they do the improvements, and hopefully the business is better, but by those improvements being done, the need for the 100% rebate to help them may not necessarily be there to where you do a descending value on that 100%. Where 100%, once the improvements are done, you go down on a 20% per year scale, you know, 100% down to 80% for the following.
They've never done it before.
60%.
They're always, they're always on, they're always gonna say you gotta be careful because these improvements we're talking about.
No, exactly. Well, that, yeah, I mean, that.
Might be more flowers.
That's even more sort of my point is if you give them 100% until they do it, if it takes them three years to do it, they're still getting that 100%. We were kind of helping ourselves rather than 10 years straight across the board, 100% on everything. Because once those improvements are done, do you maybe look at going, okay, after, after improvements, any remaining years on the agreement go down to 50% or 60% or 40%? I mean, it's just food for thought.
Didn't that be law passed that we have access to sales tax records now?
Yeah, but I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything yet.
They have a year, I think they have a year to come up with regulations that go along with that law that have changed. We didn't see any mystery rules.
That was the way we could get it.
Yeah. There's two ways of doing it. Either boost the figures or we're gonna cap on it.
If even, I mean, from the conversation that we've had with them, they're not, like Bob said, they're not even sure or what they have, they're even doubting. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we're gonna get hard fat.
I understand. And it's just something to think about, especially capping it after the improvements are done, you know.
We'll have them suggest a cap, what they think is fair. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
I mean, what is their business plan showing? I mean, you know, that's something else you can look at is, you know, they're, as far along as they are, which I'm sure they are, is, I mean, any sort of business plan, they're putting, they're putting numbers into that plan to present to the bank for financing. Yeah, and that 1.5 is in there. So, I mean, you could even go off of their business plan and what they're thinking. They gotta help along. Those are my only questions, Mary. Thank you.
All right. So at least we can agree at least to 14 items and then on consensus, and then once we can work on the items that we questioned tonight, we can suggest maybe the attorney draw up an agreement.
You know, one other thing, Jonathan, is what about if that's not transferable, if they sell the golf course, you know? Because, you know, we don't want that to happen. We want it to stop if they sell.
That's, we're down for the past two.
And I think what we're hearing is, oh, yeah, 12 and 14 are linked. That you gotta deal with 14 with 12. I, you know, if they're gonna decouple, then we want to make sure that the ordinance we passed decoupling protects us with recognition of the zoning of the property as open space.
Consensus then? Basically, we'll work it, or work on it and represent something.
Yeah, I think we need to make that available, we need to make sure they understand this.
Item number five, I received an unusual call from St. Paul Church, which is a Catholic church in TESO. The bishop of the Olliehead Catholic Archdiocese would just like to meet with local officials if they have an open house, December 6th from 10 till noon, if anybody wishes to go there to meet the bishop.